All right. Call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen for November 28th at 7:03. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. Also, there are openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for listing and application. All right, we call rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Marone will give the community prayer.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And please keep those serving in our armed forces and first responders in our hearts and thoughts always. Amen.
All right. We'll now move on to Carver citizen participation. It's the time we allow citizens of Carver to come forward to address the board on any topic they want to. We do ask that you keep it to three minutes so other people have a chance to talk. Would anybody wish to go ahead and seeing no one rushing to the front? We'll move right on to our first agenda item is the introduction of our new Director of Planning and Community Development.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It gives me great honor to present our new Planner Director, Stephen Cole. Stephen started this past Monday. I believe you all received a copy of his resume at the beginning of November. Stephen has 13-plus years of experience in municipal government. He comes to us with an undergraduate degree and a master's degree. And we're very excited to have him. I'm not going to go through his resume right now because unfortunately he's on double duty right now. And the board that he works for has actually started the meeting six minutes ago. So I want to get him out of here real quickly. But I guess what I'll do is, do you want to hear from him or do you have any questions?
Let's hear from, I usually hear from Stephen first and then us.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator, Mr. Chairman. It's a great pleasure to be here. First chance to meet some of you folks, and I really do appreciate that opportunity. I don't have any remarks prepared, but please do know that Carver is a kind of community that I wanted to be in. And so when this opportunity presented itself, I leapt at it, and I'm very glad for that opportunity. The Administrator and I have had a few conversations about the growth trajectory of the town, the vision of the board, and some of the things that I might be able to do to assist the town in its future growth.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We've given Stephen several tours around the community. He's seen everything from the airport to the Route 44 development to multiple cranberry bogs. And we're giving him a lesson in everything. He's been going around meeting all the department heads. And, you know, again, we're very excited to have him.
So you're trying to scare him off in his first two weeks of working for us?
Well, I was trying, you know, Craig, actually, I was telling Craig Weston that I was doing this and I was giving a tour on cranberries. And Craig is dying to sit in the back of the car next time I do that to see how poorly I do it justifying the cranberries.
Okay. Anything from the board members? Sarah?
Thank you and welcomes Stephen for being here.
Mr. Clark?
I would just say I think you're coming at a good time. I think Carver's moving in a very positive direction, and I think we're going to have, we're going to keep you busy over the next few years.
I look forward to that. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Marone?
I already said welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Don't let Michael scare you away.
My only question is, now, do you become the Executive Director of the RDA instead of?
We haven't, we haven't got into that yet. I think that's up to the RDA.
Oh, okay.
And I haven't, I haven't, I haven't shared that part with Stephen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think I know what's coming next week, though.
All right. All I have to say is welcome aboard. Glad we haven't scared you off yet since Monday. Continued success and, like I say, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll let you head off to your other meeting.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Good luck.
Thank you very much. All right. Now that we've filled up with assessors and everything else, I will take a motion to continue the tax classification hearing that we tabled or postponed back on our last meeting. So I'll take a motion to open it back up.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Posed, zero. All right. Let's start off with the Board of Assessors' presentation and recommendation.
You can sit on that. 'Tis the season. 'Tis the season for tax classification. I'm Mike Paddock. I'm chairman of the Board of Assessors, and I'm pleased to be before the selectmen this evening. I just want to remind folks that the assessors work hard to make sure our property is fairly and equitably assessed. And our view as a board is to ensure that fairness is the highest goal and the best principle that we want to follow in this town. And I think we've done a fine job. I'm pretty grateful for the team we have here in town, for the knowledge, for the wisdom, and the good hearts that have been on the board, and for the way we've worked together over the last few years. Especially, it's been, it's been a pleasure. And I'd like to remind the town that it's good to be in a town that has a Board of Assessors, so when people have questions, they can sit down with some of their own town folks and work things out and hopefully be satisfied that their town is treating them right. As to the classification hearing, here we are again determining the, well, here you are again determining the potential tax rate shift for the town. And again, we have wrestled with it to work out a recommendation for you all. And it's been a challenging year again as we try to figure out how to make fairness work in a town of our size and tax capacity, which is pretty frustrating for a lot of people trying to work these things out. It still has been a challenge for us to deal with some of the ideas that have come back to us since we've hired Paul Capinos and company to handle our actual assessing and to hear how he considers how we do a few of our things. And it's bothered me, still echoes the time he sat down and said that a town of our size and type to have the shift that we do is cruel to our small businesses. And that's something that's been felt amongst the board since I've been a board member, and we've been hoping to work toward. We understand that the town has, has some challenges, that we've taken on some big projects, and it's very difficult to add additional burden to anyone in the town. But we have voted nonetheless to go for, to recommend a shift of 136, which is a .917824 for the number of people, to slightly lower the shift on commercial industrial toward residential, to try to make things a little more fair. We've recommended again to not grant an open space discount because it doesn't do anything in our town, and not grant a residential exemption or the small business exemption. At this point, I'm going to hand it off to Gail, your last name.
McAllaire.
McAllaire. See, I knew I'd get half her name right.
That's great. Thank you very much, Mike. So the shift percentages, I'm sure, will be the one that has the most discussion more than likely. So we'll just kind of briefly run over those, those other options that is before the board this evening. The first one is to not grant an open space discount. And basically, there is open space in Carver, but it's not classified as open space. Open space is typically land that's privately owned, that is sometimes stipulated in a development contract or a permitting process that certain parts of that land be set aside for open space, green space. And that, there's no land in Carver that's classified as such or has it been deemed as such. So this particular discount would shift the burden within the residential property class, so there's no properties to shift the burden to. So that one has typically been not to grant an open space discount, as is the recommendation of the Board of Assessors. Not to grant a residential exemption as well, as Michael stated. The residential exemption shifts the tax burden within the residential class as well, this time strictly from the part-time residence to full-time residence. And it's my understanding that there's a very small, if very, almost nonexistent, part-time resident population in the town of Carver. And so again, the suggestion is not to grant a residential exemption. The small business exemption shifts the tax burden within the commercial industrial person property class. And it's, it's, the laws, the requirements are that the businesses be less than 10, and it's, there's sort of some onerous issues with the way that the chapter, the exemption is crafted, so that, since the majority of the businesses in Carver are small businesses, again, there's not anyone to really shift the burden to. So again, historically, Carver has voted not to grant a small business exemption.
Mr. Chairman, should we vote those three first and then go into the tax? Because maybe historically you guys always vote no on those?
Yeah, that'll be the quickest part. But is there anybody that's going to, in the audience, is going to want to talk about those three things? Are you here mainly for the levy itself, the tax rate itself?
Tax rate.
Tax rate, okay. So nobody in the audience would have a problem with this?
In the company. I'm here for the company, too.
So nobody from the audience will be upset if we go ahead and go with not granting the open space, not granting the residential, and not granting the small business exemption? Does anybody from the audience? No, okay. So I will take a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Just say no to all three.
Further discussion on that?
One point that I promised I would make when we met with the assessors is that although you are correct that your tax classification for open space, it does not typically apply in town. So we have lots of open space, most of it's unprotected, but about 600 acres that are protected, but it belongs to the town. So it's sort of a moot point.
It's an excellent point, though.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of not granting the open space discount, not granting the residential exemption, and not granting the small business exemption, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, passes unanimously. Back on to the tax classification.
Okay. Well, that's not so much the discussion. So anyway, the shift that was voted last year was 140 percent. That shift basically takes, if the tax, the property tax levy is considered a pie, and each class has a portion of that pie, this particular shift takes a portion of what would be the residential portion and shifts it to commercial industrial person of property, to the businesses in the community. One of the issues that, that Michael was referring to as far as fairness, that's sometimes when it comes into play there, and that a lot of times in cities or towns where there's a very large portion of the, the tax base that's commercial industrial or personal property, it's a really easy thing because you have, you know, one fairly good-sized group but not so enormously huge shifting to another fairly good-sized group. So it disperses that shift. Whatever you're asked to carry a larger load, there's more businesses to disperse that load amongst. When you're talking about a fairly large residential class and around, I think it's less than 20 percent or so, commercial industrial person of property, it takes such a large amount of shift to give any sort of even minor relief to the, to the larger group. And so, you know, as Michael stated, there were reasons last year for the 140. And, but, and again, this is just, you know, this is more internal here and for discussion with the town. There was an understanding that there would, was going to be some sort of an effort to kind of come back to center again at some point. So at 136, the recommended percentage by the Board of Assessors sort of makes a movement in that direction, you know, without going too far. And the rates actually would be here without any sort of shift. If there was no, if there was a single tax rate in the town, in the town of Carver, the rate for everyone, all classes of property, would be $19.40. If the 136 percent shift is adopted and voted by the Board of Selectmen, the, it's this rather long laborious number, it would be a .917824 residential factor. That's what you actually vote, which generates a rate. But that specifies the amount of shift of total value from the residential class to the commercial industrial personal property class. And that shift would bring that overall one rate from 1940 down to $17.81 for the residential rate, which is a significant reduction. And the commercial industrial rate would rise to $26.39 from 1940. So I'd be happy.
Could I give a couple of quick numbers?
Please.
Sure. I just wanted to toss out a couple of numbers. The effective, the effective effect, I guess, of the shift on the average residential taxpayer would be about $53 per year. The current amount, and I just lost the, because this, we changed a few numbers in here, but it's somewhere in the mid-500s is what the...
It's here, 136.
No, that's not what, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We had a different, it's okay. Somewhere in the mid-500s is what the average taxpayer is being subsidized by the businesses in the town. And if you went back to a zero shift, right, but you have to subtract the 742 from the 272, so. But just to let you know that it's about $500 per tax bill that was being subsidized by the, the 1.4 shift.
Jim?
Mr. Clark?
I just want to be clear. The current tax rate is $17.69 residential. Is that correct? And the proposal would raise it from 1769 to 1781? Is that accurate?
Right. As a result of the two and a half, Prop 2.5, the new growth increases the levy.
Okay. So that's got nothing to do with what you recommended? That's just what's happening to it anyway?
Correct. Right.
Second page is confusing.
Right.
So keeping the same shift?
Correct.
The tax rate's going from 1769 to 1781. Is that correct?
Same shift, be 1763. If you kept it at 140, it'd be 1764.
So it would actually drop a little bit? Because it was 1769?
Would be 1763.
If we keep it at 140?
That's on page 10.
You're next to last, almost towards the end.
On the top left, it says Carver FY18 Tax Classification Analysis.
Right, sorry. Yes. Next to the, it's on the, next to the last page. If I may, Mr. Chairman. So actually, this, the top part that Dee's talking about is if, are we on that page? Page 10?
Next to last.
Next to the last.
Backside, on the backside.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So what is, that top, the top chart there that starts out percent shift, residential
rate, rate change, so it shows there that if there were no shift at all, it would be $19.40 across all classes. But at, at 140 percent shift, the tax rate would be 1763 or 9.12 percent less than the non, no shifted, a rate with no shift involved at all. At 136, it's 1781 or 8.20 percent shift reduction in the residential rate as a result of the shift versus 2717 at 140, which is an increase of 40 percent, or 2639, an increase of 36 percent versus compared to no shift whatsoever. Down below is another chart that shows the average single-family residential property is estimated to be roughly $295,300. At 140 percent shift, the current shift, the average tax bill would be roughly 5206 or a $219 increase versus an average commercial industrial property is roughly $453, $453,600. At 140 percent shift, the average commercial tax bill is roughly $12,324. That would be an increase of $368 if the current shift was maintained. At 136, the increase is roughly between, the difference between the two, as Michael was saying, saying, the difference between the 5206 and the 5259 and 219 and the 272 is roughly $50 or so versus commercial, the commercial bill goes to 11971, an increase of 14.
So I guess my, my primary concern is that we did, we did, although we worked very hard, I think, to try to keep the cost of the school down last year, that was, that was an extra burden on folks. And I know this is telling us it's only a $54 difference here. I'm just not sure, I think that we've been attracting a lot of businesses in town the past five or 10 years. A lot of businesses have stayed and done pretty well. I just think that there are way more factors that attract businesses than just the taxes. My husband and I own a business, small business here in town. We have for 25 years. And even though we don't have a storefront, we certainly know what it's like to have to deal with taxes. So I get that, and the implication that if we were to go against this is somehow being cruel, you're being cruel or to, being cruel to either party, no matter what you do. So I think that that's, that in itself maybe is not a very fair statement. And I guess, again, I wonder how do we know for a fact that that's going to attract, excuse me, I have a cold.
I know.
That that's going to actually attract businesses or the kind of businesses that we want. I mean, I could go down the street starting up in North Carver and name some of the new businesses that have come here and are still here and apparently doing well. And they chose Carver for a reason, and it may not have had anything to do with taxes. So that's kind of my position, and I'm sticking to it. I know that the original master plan said that in order for us to really significantly make a difference to the taxes, the residential taxes, we would, the type, the quality and quantity of businesses that would have to come here would really change the face of the town. And, you know, we, people move here for a reason, and I'm not sure that it's big box or whatever it is where you're supposedly trying to attract, even though zoning does not allow that. That's my two cents.
Something for the assessors, Ms. Marone.
I guess I have a different take on it because I remember this classification hearing last year, and I remember that the businesses got hit last year a little bit more than we had hoped, and that I believed last year, we said we would strive this year to help out a little bit more. And I agree with Sarah about the residents, and so it's a tough call between the two. But I would at least like to see the businesses, like, be at a no increase this year. And if I understand this, and maybe you can answer this, if we went down to a 135 percent shift, if my understanding is correct, it would be an increase of $12 to the residents and an improvement to the businesses of $72. Is that correct?
I think it's $53 to the residents.
No.
Well, the difference between 272 and 284.
Between those two, between 135 and 136?
Yes.
Yes, it would, yes, it would increase the average single-family bill roughly $284, and it would decrease the average commercial bill $72.
Right, right.
And that would be an increase of above the 219. If we don't do anything, that'd be another increase of $65 just on the average.
Versus the 50, what was it, 50-something that we mentioned before. So I, I'm just in goodwill to the businesses. We all decided and approved the school. We did a really good job keeping everything down when we voted the school in. But, and I agree with Sarah that we want to be careful about not bringing too many businesses in, but you know that we are all struggling. And I just believe that we had a goodwill of conversations last year that we should try to help out the businesses a little bit more this year.
All right. I don't have any specific questions, and before I voice which way I'd be leaning anyway, I'm going to want to hear from the residents first. I just want to make sure that the numbers in here are already including the debt exclusion numbers. So you're looking at, it's, if we keep the same, you're not, you're looking at a, for an average of an approximately a $300,000 home of 219. There's no added to that that's already built into this, so. All right. So I'd like to, unless you have something else to present, I would like to start with residents.
Do we go?
Chairman, I'm just moving to the table over here.
Okay.
Microphone just.
Oh, go ahead. You guys can stay there then. Mr. Pratt, you keep sticking your hand up, so I'm going to let you go first. Please come forward, identify yourself. Do you know the drill?
Yes, sir.
Oh, please don't call me sir.
Stephen Pratt, 16 Weston Street. Thank you for having me tonight, and thank the assessors for their time this evening, too. I did provide some information to Ms. Milonowski earlier today, but I'd also want to give a packet to each of the selectmen if I could. The assessors have it already.
And I have extra copies, so the chair, I only have three extra copies, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
As the assess, no, from talking earlier, my position is that not only should there not be any shift to the, the tax rate, but I would suggest that perhaps with the other circumstances, there may be an increase need to shift. And I'll try to explain it. Historically, Carver has had a split tax rate ever since Proposition 2.5 came in about. In fact, you know, I provided you with a history of our tax rates and the average single-family tax bill all the way from 1982 to 2017. The average tax bill over that course of 35 years has gone up almost 6 percent, 5.7 percent, which is twice the rate of inflation over that period of time. The reason why we've had the shift is a lot of reasons. But the reason, the most importantly, is because residential properties make up, you know, well over 80 percent of the value in this town. Commercial, approximately 10 percent, or less than 10 percent, I'm sorry. But the biggest piece that is occurring, and, you know, we've heard, we talked about this for the last seven years, part of the town building study committee, is personal property. Personal property over the last 12 years has increased from $22 million of value all the way up to what's currently $112 million. That's a large piece of our value in this town. And the reason why that has happened is primarily because of NSTAR. NSTAR has put in substations, auto transformers, new poles, new lines. All of those have added to our new growth, have added to our tax levy, they have a All of those have added to our new growth, have added to our tax levy, they've allowed us to do the police, fire station, will allow us to do the police station. All the work that Michael has done in using this in the financial management plan have been extremely beneficial to company, comp, state, sorry, to the town and therefore has helped us, get us to do the debt exclusion for the schools. The problem that I see is that with the recommended rate that the assessors have put before you, it would be a 5.5 percent increase to the single-family home tax bill over last year. That was in addition to the 9.5 percent increase that the average home had last year. That 5.5 percent increase by shifting it doesn't sound like a lot, but it is when you look at the fact that it's $272. And that $272 is made up of the shift, it's made up the fact that the home values increased at a higher percentage than commercial and industrial, but it also represents what happens with personal property. And what I want to say to you is that because of NSTAR being a public utility, and I've told you, you know, come before you before and explained the whole way that they depreciate their, their personal property, it's not like any other business. Personal property never increases in value. It only decreases in value and then it just, or it disappears, it gets retired. The problem with that personal property tax that was associated with it, it stays in the tax levy. It's not like an excise tax on your automobile. When you sell your car, the town doesn't collect any excise tax, doesn't get, nobody else has to pay it. But personal property, when it depreciates, or in the case of NSTAR and Eversource, they get to reduce the value of their new growth by 30 percent before they pay any taxes because they're a public utility and they're allowed to set aside a reserve to maintain the public infrastructure. So, 30 percent of the value of that new, new pole or that new transformer immediately gets multiplied by the prior year's tax rate, commercial tax rate, and gets redistributed amongst all classes. Somebody has to pay it because it's in the tax levy because we've added the new growth. So, every time NSTAR's come up with millions and millions of dollars, and they've added probably $80 million over the last dozen years of gross cost to this town, they're only paying 70 percent of that in taxes. NSTAR, Eversource, the parent, is the largest taxpayer in the town of Carver. They have over $80 million of assessed value. They pay $2.2 million of the tax levy, almost nine, over 9 percent. So, any shift to reduce the commercial to help the small businesses is really helping Eversource, which is a $20 billion company, to pay less taxes in the town of Carver and the residents are going to have to pick up that difference. So, I would suggest to you that our tax bills are not too low in Carver. The second page that I gave you, I'm sorry, the second page, the second double-sided, shows you that our tax bill from 2017 is 151 highest in the state. So, that means there's 200 other cities and towns in the state that have a tax bill higher than us and two of whom are right next door. Wareham and Middleborough have to lower average tax bill than the town of Carver. The other thing that helps, hurts us in town of Carver is our per capita income. We get a higher cherry sheet percentage than other towns because we have a lower income and we have a lower equalized value. Those things play in role as how much revenue we get to maintain the schools, maintain the police and the fire, along with our tax levy. So, in closing, I would just like to say, please consider what the shift is going to do for the residential homeowner. We told them we would save them money. My position is you increase the bill $272, whatever money we told them we saved, we're just taking it back with the other hand by shifting it, the tax from the commercial back to the residential. Thank you.
Steve, before you go.
Yeah.
Looking on your list, and maybe I'm just not seeing it, do you have the record of what the split was, is that the CIP shift factor?
The CIP shift factor from prior years, yeah.
Right, okay, so that, that's, that's the split we've all.
Yeah, that's the 1.4 versus what's the record, yep.
Thank you very much.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody have any question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Hearing none, thank you.
Chair, I have a question. You, you use the figure of $80 million for NSTAR?
Mm-hmm.
Is that specifically NSTAR or is that all utilities?
I have this, I only have one copy, but you're welcome to. This is from the assessors page. It's the far left is NSTAR only. NSTAR has $78 million worth of personal property. They also own $3 million of commercial real estate in this town, which they pay obviously the commercial tax rate on as well. So, they do, but this year in 2018, the personal property is now greater than, than $80 million.
My question is, what I was just focusing on is that in comparison to the amount of solar projects we have in town, and, and I see actually, okay.
Right, so if.
So, our solar projects are the, close to $10 million.
Yeah, if I could, the actual, the assessors do provide a breakdown of what is by the utilities on the assessment classification report. It looks like it's got all the numbers, the 101, the 103, all the way down. If you go down to the 500 category, that's all personal property and 504 is utilities. And that, the, the three utilities that are in there are NSTAR Electric, which has $78 million, NSTAR Gas, which has another couple of million dollars, and then Energy, which has about $45,000. And then all of the other ones, 505 is Verizon, 506 is Algonquin Gas, 508 are all the cellular companies, the T-Mobiles, the AT&amp;T Singular, or whatever they want to be called. And then 550 to 552 are the solar, the four solar farms, Michael.
Do you see any anomalies this compared to other towns as far as NSTAR?
Well, I do see, I do see it as anomaly. I've looked at other towns. We have a significant amount of personal property in this town and I think part of that is due to the fact that we have 40 square miles. You know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of poles, we have a lot of roads, we have big transformers. We were the benefactor of the fact that they shut down the, the coal plant over on the Cape and NSTAR put in all new auto transformers, new poles, new lines, so they could feed electricity to the Cape. That brought in over $14 million just of, of gross original cost. Never mind the transformer that they put in back in 2009.
They're actually two.
Yeah, two, right. So, I mean, we, we benefited from a new growth perspective significantly because of NSTAR, but at the same time, because of the nature of that way that they reserve or depreciate their things, right away, they take off 30 percent from the assessment and that has to be paid by somebody and that somebody is the rest of us.
And it stays in the levy.
Sorry, based on this new information, what is, what are you recommending?
I, I would knock recommend changing from the 140. I would keep it the 140 at a minimum, but I would consider 145 because that's still a 3 percent increase to the residential homes. It's $151, it's still a 3 percent increase and that seems reasonable given the rate of inflation, given what we increased last year's tax levy by. And quite honestly, and I'll, with respect to Michael, I, yeoman's work, Michael, I'm serious, about all the work that you did and, and everybody did to keep the price of the school down, but for us to come back and say, we're going to raise your, your taxes $272, it's like we're just taking it back.
That was tying to my point, yeah.
So, I, my personal recommendation, we want 45. Unfortunately, it's regrettable, but you guys have to make the decision to what it should be. But maybe there's a point in time to go to a single tax rate, I don't know when, I don't know if, because I'm worried that as the personal property further depreciates, NSTAR replaces equipment, you know, that levy is just going to shift back to the rest of the taxpayers. You know, if they ever replaced that transformer they put in in 2009, they take that one out of service, that was a $36 million gross original cost. That's how much was in the levy, it was, it was $690,000 in the tax levy in 2011. By 2024, that is going to be a million dollars of our tax levy because of the growth of 2.5 percent every year. It's, to me, personal property is a wonderful tool if used properly and we're using it properly. We're using it to build our infrastructure, we're not asking people to dead exclude everything. You know, all the projects that are being done in this town, everybody, anybody else in the state's going to be scratching their head saying, how is that possible? Who builds a new fire station and new school at the same time and, by the way, renovates the middle high school? Nobody. What do they do? They ask voters for more money. They say, give us a debt exclusion. Who's suing that? Nobody. You know, this is like, this is like 1994 all over again when we got the equity aid. We did the right thing, we renovated Town Hall, we built the library, we built the middle school. You know, we did all that without taxpayers additional money because we were still paying for the high school. We put that sixth grade wing on there, no additional taxes. Those are the things that forward-thinking towns do. They think ahead and Michael's executing it to the letter, to the letter. And I applaud him because what we thought about seven years ago, and we all said, oh, let's build, do this this way. Nobody, everybody said, not going to happen. The bond folks said, you'll never be able to get a bond. You'll never be able to do it if you just set money aside in a stabilization fund. And yet, look what Michael did. Got some, one of the best rates, got a great, great, great credit rating, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, but it's a team effort.
Yeah.
I know, but, you know, it's, everything's going to fall somewhere. So, anyways, sorry, too much time.
That's all right. And I want to thank you for putting this all together.
Very helpful.
If I may too, Mr. Chair, I think it's important for people to realize the solar projects that we've done that are payment in lieu of taxes, which is really nice because those won't depreciate like the NSTAR.
Right.
They, we'll be getting that through the whole life of the project.
Not necessarily true. There, there are tax agreements that we have and each one of them has been negotiated differently, but when their term ends, they, in essence, they fall into the same trap that, that has been mentioned. So, where you do have depreciation that takes years to go, even when you have these tax agreements, when they expire, then it does fall into the same item that Mr. Pratt mentioned.
Correct, but, but, but for 25 years it doesn't.
Depending upon the term.
Right.
Anybody else from the audience? Mr. Shay. That's all right.
My name's Cornelius Shay.
Any address, please?
148 Plymouth Street in Carver. I won't rehash much of what Steve said. Ron and Alan and I discussed this on, on Area 58 last year, if anybody wants to take a moment to look it up, but I just want to reiterate that $272 is a big burden for the average taxpayer in this town whose average income is far lower than the surrounding communities and it's something to seriously consider. I believe Sarah is right and I think it's, if you want to look to bring in more business into this town, I think you should look into maybe one-time tax breaks for new businesses or new construction in the town rather than putting the debt onto the, the people of the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I haven't said my piece yet, but I'm going to let my fellow board members go first so they won't add anything.
Can I add one, just remind one thing?
Go right ahead.
Just remind me, in all that's, in all that's been said, Mr. Chairman, that the shift is 50, the effect of the shift would be $53, not, not the, wouldn't be 272. Also, it's encouraging to me and I'm, and I'm in no way endorsing more taxes because that's not what I'm looking for, but on this list that Mr. Pratt has supplied of 27 towns here in our locale, we're sick from the bottom. So, it's, it's not like we're a town that's been oppressed. So, that's, that's all we have to say, you guys can decide, we'll love you no matter what way you.
The feeling's mutual.
Anything else you'd like to say, Sarah?
No, I, I just appreciate you giving us the time to contradict you as well as agree respectfully, contradict respectfully.
That's all right, does somebody else want to come up and speak? Oh, okay. Thanks, Sarah, Ron?
Yeah, I was actually going to, I had done the math real quick and there are 27 South Shore communities, so it's communities on the South Shore and of them, only six have a lower tax burden than we do. And I do want to give the board some credit because I think it's been the fiscal management over the last few years that we have resisted the, we, we've been controlling our spending much better than we had. If you take a look, I think there was a sheet that might have been the back of what Steve gave us, showed how quickly the burden took off for those early years back in the 2000s and I think we've really worked hard to try to control that and be cognizant of it. So, I'm not going to suggest for a minute that the, the average tax burden in town doesn't affect people, but I do think that it does need to be pointed out that of 27 local South Shore communities, that the bulk of those are higher than us.
We're doing a good job.
So, that, we are, we are doing a good job and our auditors have confirmed that the town is being run overall better than our peers, than, in our fiscal management. The other thing I'd want to point out is that we are hopeful that in North Carver in several years, we're going to have an opportunity to see some significant commercial industrial development up there, which even if we only realize half of our expected revenues may be that source of relief we've been looking for that might give us the option to, in a felled swoop, entertain closing that gap significantly. And so, that I don't necessarily think anything we do tonight is representative of, will be 10 years from now because I do have a very strong hope that that project does go through and that will be, I don't want to say life-changing, but it's going to, it would have a significant positive effect on the town revenues if we were to get something like that to come in. And it's probably going to be our only bite at the apple at something like that, so that's something that our new planning director will have to be working very hard to try to get realization of. All that said, I, I do specifically remember sitting here just a couple of years ago when we were contemplating getting the school passed and discussing the shift. And I know that I committed to leaving the shift where it is for the immediate future until such time that making the shift was not going to have a negative impact on the residences, i.e. some sort of additional source of revenue coming in that offset the, the tax rate. So, that I feel compelled to keep that promise that I made a few years ago to not change the shift. I'm sympathetic with Steve's suggestion that we bump it to 145, but I think that we're keeping our commitment and staying within the framework of what, certainly what I committed to, to not make the shift. I understand what the assessors are saying, I, this is something we've wrestled with for a long time. We actually had the gap closed at one point pretty well until state aid sort of started drifting in the opposite direction. So, I'm not sure that I want to get it any higher than 140, but I really would be, I really feel that personally, I made the commitment that we would, that we would not change the shift and increase the tax burden on the residents beyond what's going to happen naturally just from Prop Two and a Half and personal property. So, my feeling is to stay with the 140.
Ms. Marone.
With all this new information and conversation, I have to agree with the comments. I thank you, Steve Pratt, for all that information about NSTAR and the personal, the value at 30 percent. But I agree with Ron at the 140 because I'm still thinking of the businesses as well and at the 145, it's a little bit burdensome on both sides. So, I agree with the 140, staying the same.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, my argument earlier was in fact to stay with the 140, just in case, that wasn't clear.
My turn?
The other chair.
Oh, okay. That's, I think I say it every year, this is probably my most disliked meeting that we have, talking about this.
Even from negotiations, union negotiations?
This is my, this is my most disliked meeting.
We're feeling a little insecure over here.
We still love you.
It's nothing personal.
That's why we said we still love you earlier.
Yeah. Um, yeah, you know. Correct me if I'm wrong, that even if we didn't have the debt exclusion, if we, if we hadn't voted that, taxes would still gonna be, be going up if we kept a split, $219 for an average house.
If we didn't have the debt exclusion in there?
Yeah, right. Because if we'd never voted for the tax exclusion?
I don't think so.
Yeah, then the levy would be reduced by the amount of the annual payment towards the debt.
You'd be off a couple of dollars, but in proportion, you're
Yes, yes.
Exactly. So, when I, because to me, really, it was, this has been the first year that our residents saw what they voted for. They've seen it in their tax bills of what it meant to vote for that, that exclusion. I think some people were maybe surprised and realized it, how much it was gonna be, even though we tried our best to get it out there, but it was, there was some sticker shock out there. And when I attended a meeting with the assessors, when they were in the discussion phase on this, I saw that, you know, for the average house of approximately, you know, 295,300, the tax bill is going up $219, which means if you have a $600,000 home, you're gonna see a 438, basically 440 dollar increase. And that's only if we keep it at 140. I think that's enough of a sticker shock for the residents of this town. Salaries still aren't creeping up as fast as what our taxes are. So, I think, I think that we'd have a significant amount of our population that have a huge impact if we went down to even 136. I, eventually, hopefully, we can get closer, thanks to Mr. Pratt and the list he provided. Since 1982, the closest our split's been was 1.241, so basically 125. Most everything else has been in the average out to 1, 1.35, you know, 135 to closer to 140. We had one year that was actually up to 150.
15.
Um, I would like to see this eventually, but until demograph, either demographics change, or we get the development that we're kinda hoping we see in North Carver, I'm going to have a, even though we haven't had a motion yet, so we haven't decided what we're gonna be voting on, I would strongly suggest or urge my fellow board members that we don't change the 140 this year. I just don't think the time is right. It's bad enough our, you know, our residents are gonna see a 219, you know, on average, and, you know, yeah, it's only, quote, $53 more, but I'm sorry, an extra $53, that, that's a lot of money to put some people. And so, you know, that's if we went to the 136. So, I hope that the, I will hear a motion.
I'll make that motion to keep, keep us at the, keep the split at the 140 for another year.
Second? Okay, we have a first and a second.
Can I?
And Mr. Town Administrator.
And that motion also includes authorizing staff to implement your vote tomorrow via the Gateway System.
Okay.
Whatever your vote is.
Okay.
We need authorization to do that.
You shall be so authorized.
The Gateway System?
Hmm?
Could you explain the Gateway System?
It's the DOR system that we do every year.
Gotcha. A lot of people don't understand that.
And we also have a hard copy. This is a hard copy, but I'm just signing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of retaining the split rate of 140, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. And I do want to thank the board of assessors.
Thank you.
And Dee, and
Thank you for having me.
For all the hard work you've done. I appreciate your recommendation. I fully understand it. I just can't do it right now.
Always a delightful educational experience.
Still loves you.
And we do.
Still loves us.
Do.
I will take a motion to close the tax classification hearing.
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Of those, any discussions?
Anywhere in that
All those in favor of closing the tax classification hearing, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, can I just have a couple of minutes, just on this topic, now that the vote's been done?
Yeah, I'd also like to mention something, maybe if I can talk about it first, if you don't mind?
Go ahead.
It's concerning, you know, one of the things we've got, and I think a gentleman probably was going to want to talk about it, but didn't get here in time, is what we're dealing with over by the airport. Right now, because of the fact that we have a split, Carver has one tax rate, Plymouth has another, I think we were gonna hear that everybody's building in Plymouth and nobody's wanting to build in Carver. One thing I think the board should think about at some point is creating some sort of enterprise zone around, just around the airport. I've got it right here. An enterprise zone around the airport where that tax rate would be equal to Plymouth's tax rate, so there wouldn't be a bias against building in Carver. Part of that investigation, if we decide that we're gonna want to look into this, I would want to know how much we would have to opt, how much tax we would be losing that would have to be offset by somebody else picking it up, until we see construction on the Carver side.
And, and remember, those are very large, square-footage buildings.
Right.
So, obviously, it would have some effect on
And I say, this is just, this isn't open for discussion right now, this is just a thought
Just an idea.
That we need to think of. And so, Alan, do you?
I'm sitting down, if it's just a thought, I'll
It's just a thought for now. It's something we, it's a thought for us to think about.
Okay.
And, and, let me say, how the heck do I put that in the notes? Mr. Milonowski?
So, Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely correct. We, we had a tour, Steve Cohen and I, the call of the new planning director, and there's really only a few buildings that are actually built on the Carver side of the airport. And one of the owners that we went into, he has a facility that had at least four Lear jets, if you will, and they, they were probably bigger than Lear jets in there on the Carver side. And he is, his business is expanding, and he needed to have additional hangar size. At the back of his building, he has the structure built that he can add another addition to it. But since his building's in Carver, he has selected not to do that, and he's went over to the Plymouth side in a separate building, and is buying a, a building that's for sale on the Plymouth side, because the taxes are significantly less on that side. So, he's the one that's brought this up to our attention, and I believe that the Plymouth Airport Association has also brought that to our attention. And I guess this is where there's, you know, a real unique opportunity to, to really look at how the town can look from a policy standpoint to encourage growth. And, you know, I have the maps, I have the areas you can look at, and you can see the breakdown, you know, where the buildings are being built. If you go by the site right now, you're seeing a new building being built directly across from Dunkin' Donuts. It's being squeezed in there. And, you know, Plymouth does offer utilities with water and sewer, and we don't. And we also have a higher tax rate. So, what they're suggesting is that as Plymouth continues to develop its master plan, it would be better to put buildings where they properly should be sited on an airport, versus where it's cheaper to build. And again, you know, as, as the chairman brought up, it's something that, that I'd like us to explore, the chairman would like us to explore, we would have Steve Cole actually dig into that and come back with some numbers. But before we go down that, that path, there is a lot of work that needs to be done, and, you know, we, I guess we wanted to see is, is the board willing to consider that? And again, think about it, if you have a, an airport, it's a master plan community, it's, it's under security, and you have a choice of building a building, and, and all of a sudden, the distinction becomes, am I gonna build on this town line or that town line because of the property taxes? You know, that's not gonna encourage growth for us. So, there is something to be said that if we equalize the tax rate structure, that maybe we're gonna encourage more development on our side just because of that. Now, again, it, it's not guaranteed, but it's, it's an opportunity for us to take a look at.
If we do go down that road to, to investigate, because I believe Ms. Blanchard has some definite, but she'd be very busy, and I don't want to get into a big discussion on that now, but I would want her be able, go ahead. Ellen, come on down.
Well, you know, Mr. Chairman, to get into this discussion is probably not the time right now, but I would have Stephen reach out to Ellen and get her input at that point. But right now
Very, very briefly, because it's not on the agenda.
Well, I would, I was not going to say a word, I was, but Mr. Milonowski brought the whole thing out, so I thought I had, had to make a statement.
But, because we're just, what, what would need to do to go into it, the plan, so, I mean, very briefly
Well, this is just brief, but that particular property owner, that, building owner, they don't own the property, they all lease the property from the town of Plymouth Airport Commission. So, it's just a value on the building.
I don't want to get into
I'm just
Who owns what, or?
I'm, if you'd just give me a minute here.
One more second.
The averag, the building value in Carver is not the same as the building value in Plymouth, when in fact, the Plymouth building values are higher than the hangar buildings are in Carver. So, we, when, we have determined that they are paying exactly the same taxes, tax bills, not tax rates, tax bills, because
That's something we need to be going
So, that is, I just want to bring that up.
When they're talking about
Yes, and I, I would be
So, I'd make sure that
Thank you.
They will be reaching out to you to, to get that vital information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would say, we've, because we revisit this periodically, you do have to talk about the tax burden, the actual tax dollars spent.
Yeah, I know.
Because when you start talking about rates
No, I hate rates.
In different towns, you know, they'll say, some town has a, you know, $10 rate.
Right.
But if the average home is $1,005, then they're paying significantly more in actual taxes than we are here.
Oh, yeah.
You have to talk about the actual dollars spent.
If you go through the municipal demographic data, it, again and again, we have a terrible tax rate, but it's, and as Mr. Pratt found, we have a real good, a comparatively decent tax burden.
Correct.
So, all right, can we move on to Council on Aging Update? What?
Just get the other file.
Oh.
Thank you.
I reckon we'll leave it until it's signed.
Are you holding us hostage?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you want to curtail that after Sarah hands it to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ron.
And I just thought it was our charming personalities that you were waiting for.
That's it. Yeah, my, my
Sorry, I don't think I'm contagious.
Okay, I'll take it anyway.
All right. We're into the plus, aren't we?
Yeah. What the heck?
Council on Aging Update
Hey, how are you? How good are you?
And on COA Community Center Options. Did you hear what I just said?
No, not at all.
I was afraid of that.
So, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as I've been periodically updating you, as we started to kind of understand what the needs are for a community, for a council on aging center, and also understanding that the master plan was talking about a community center as well, what we did is we went to the council of the COA Board of Directors, and they put together a subcommittee to, to first go out and kind of poll different seniors in the community to see what the, the needs were. But also, since the, the Board of Directors, in essence, is representing the senior population on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the town, they're technically the experts that can speak for that community. And, and with that, we've had several meetings with Carol, myself, and Carol introduced the members in a second, to kind of go through, understanding what the needs are. About that. And, and we have taken those needs that, that we felt were necessary to satisfy the population, including some future growth, and we've tried to put that down on paper to determine what that program would look like. And, and with that, we had sent around a copy of a proposed addition to the library, which we're calling the Carver Community Center Library slash Council on Aging Center, and again, have tried to, to address that. So, there, there has been several months of work, and, and a lot of discussion with the members, and, and with them also reaching out to, to the general public. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Carol.
Hi.
Hi. Please identify yourself.
I'm Carol Julius, I'm the Library and Council on Aging Director. And with me is my committee. Paula Babin would have been here tonight. Paula Babin is chairman of the COA Board of Directors, and also has been heading up this committee with Michael and I. Paula's in the hospital, and so she can't be here tonight.
Nothing serious, I hope.
So, well, I, I don't want to say much more than that, but
Please give us
I will, I will.
Give her our best wishes.
I will, I will.
Put it this way, she wanted to be here.
Yes, she wanted to be here, and
Whips me around.
Her major concern, actually, yesterday, was that I know that she wouldn't be here tonight, so, in typical Paula fashion. Also, on the committee is Nancy Pano, who's sitting back there, and not up here. And we had one other member who is no longer on the board, so right now, it's, it's just the two of them and us. And do you have the plans?
Yes, they're on our computer.
So, can I tell you, I left my copy at, in my office at the Council on Aging, and if we do this, I'll never have to say that again, because I'll have one office. So, I don't know if you want to just go through this, if you want, Michael probably can explain a lot of it better than I can, but, you know, the, the basic idea is to, to put an addition on to the end of the library, basically coming off of where we currently have the long hallway that you come into from the parking lot. And it would go, you know, sort of perpendicular to the way the building is now, and it would add on a dining hall, sort of so along the lines of what we have now, and then also a commercial kitchen. We would repurpose some office space that we currently have at the library that we use for storage, we would be able to repurpose some of that, and then we would also have a second floor in the addition that could be for a craft room and some storage on the second floor as well. I, I would, you know, say, and I, Michael I know would, would agree, that, you know, this is very preliminary in terms of, you know, there's a lot of details that would have to be worked out there. The other night, I thought of, oh, you know, we have like that delayed alarm, you guys know, when you use the meeting room, so we have to think about, how does that impact, like now with a kitchen and a dining room, and, you know, things like that. But in terms of a, of a concept, of whether or not we think this would work, I feel confident saying, yes, I think that, I think that this could work. And the, the members of the COA Board of Directors that I've been working with would, would agree with me on that. I think I can safely say that.
So, let me just quickly walk you through the plan, but before, and I'm gonna start on the first page, before we start discussing this, I think there were a couple items that we identified in the library that needed to be addressed. As, the first is, there's really not a lot of storage space in the library. So, one of the objectives, when we started to look at this, is how can we potentially create some more storage space? The second is, when the library was built, that the heating units that are in the library are built into the building. And they're built through a truss roof that does not allow the heating units to be carried out of the building above the roof line, which leaves two options. One is that you have to cut into the roof at five or six different locations, use a crane, and lift out the heating units, and then put them back in, patch the roof, reshingle the roof, and do that. Very quickly, that gets to become a million-dollar job. Heating units do need to be replaced, they will need to be replaced, they have a useful life. When that useful life's over, you have to replace those. So, I'm mentioning that because that's something in our capital plan that we know is coming up, and if you're able to have some synergies while you are redoing an addition to the building, and you can address that, it's a way of saving money, because you're killing two birds with one stone with, with people that are there. We do have another alternative, that if we're opening up one end of the building, they may be able to be dropped down to the second floor, and then carted out the end of the building, which is really the most economical way, but then that's gonna create cosmetic issues that you're gonna have to deal with, plus you're gonna have to open up one end of the building, rip out windows to do that. So, that, that's there. And the second thing that I want, the third thing I want to mention, is that we have preliminary showed these plans to some of our public safety, and, and what surprised me was Mr. Walsh jumped all over this, and he goes, "This is perfect." He goes, you know, there are many times when
I'm afraid to ask.
This has nothing to do with
Not bad.
This has nothing to do with Mr. Walsh ever intending to use the facility personally. This has everything to do with it professionally. And, you know, when he opens up our shelters down at the middle high school, you know, when we have a big power outage, you know, there have been times in the town where it's take, where the schools have gotten online faster than some of our villages and some of the people that were in need of being served. So there was some conflict at times where he had to have people stay there, but the school wanted to open. And it takes, you know, some time to clean up after the shelter's been closed. So that has created some option. What he's always looked for, and we do have downstairs in this building, he'll open up a temporary warming shelter, but that's really just using our downstairs, you know, conference room. There's nothing there. He felt that with what we're proposing here, he goes, that's perfect. If we ever need a mid-size warming center, this is the ideal location to do it, because we have storage space and we'll have a kitchen. And he can really accomplish an awful lot there. So that was a piece that I didn't expect. On the first page, what you're seeing is the end of the library, right off of Meadowbrook Road and right off of the Housing Authority. And what this proposes to do is to put a, an addition off the end, and in doing so, that addition would go on portion of the parking lot, as you see in this plans, which would then mean shifting the parking lot over probably another 40 or 50 feet into the wood lines that we have there. We have plenty of space to do that. It would require taking down some trees. We probably have to put some fencing up to that, but we have room to do that. And in doing so, it would also allow us to relook at the one-way piece on Meadowbrook Road, where we may be able to widen that a little bit and put in diagonal parking. Point being is that from a parking standpoint, we will have equal or more parking spaces with this move. We're not going to lose any parking spaces. So that's what was able to be determined in this first slide. If you move on to the second slide, through the middle of the page is where you see the dash line. The dash line is the existing end of the building. And off to the right of that, you see a dining room with 1,150 square feet that could handle 166 occupants and 66 actual sitting-down dining. Then going to the left of that, we have a double passageway that gets into the existing large meeting room, which if that was set up in a dining configuration, could handle 48 dining people. And what the goal was when the COA Board was to be able to have at least 100 seats available, you know, for special events, whether it's St. Patrick's Lunch or Dinner or other events that they do do. Now, again, not every day, not every quarter, but they do do these occasionally through the year. And this configuration would actually allow more seating than that, if we put eight seats around the table versus the six that are shown here. Also, you see that there's a kitchen across the hallway, because we've extended the hallway out, that would allow for four people to be working in the kitchen and would give us, you know, in essence, a small-scale industrial kitchen to provide the daily lunches and special event dinners and also the meals on wheels that are cooked out of the kitchen. For those that have viewed that have been down the existing COA, it's a galley kitchen, it has a residential dishwasher, and God love our cook for cooking down there. It's not an easy job to do.
We'll have to add roller skates to the budget, because I think Dawn's going to need them in that kitchen.
I was gonna say, just a quick question, though. The one thing that the current situation has is that the kitchen is immediately adjacent, as opposed to what, like a 10-foot walkway across for delivery of food.
There is a hallway. So the plan would be, like, right now, we put food in steam trays. So the plan would be, again, we would use steam trays. They would put the food, you know, in the kitchen, in the steam trays, and then those would go across the hallway. And, you know, ideally, at the time that we serve lunch, you know, 11:45, that's not generally a busy time at the library. A lot of the things, you know, that are busiest at one location, some are kind of offset by being a little bit less busy at the library. It's not ideal, we agree. But the other option would have been to put an entrance on the backside of the parking lot, and we felt like people really wouldn't want to have to walk all the way around for that. You know, a little bit of history, when I first started here in 99, that door from the parking lot was locked all the time. The trustees wouldn't let people come in that way, they wanted them to come in through the main entrance, because, you know, it's this beautiful, brand-new building. And so people were mad before they even got to the desk, because they had to walk all the way around. So I'm a big proponent of convenience to parking lot versus, you know, it is, it is a little bit of a...
The intention is not to suggest that that back entrance is strictly for COA access.
Correct.
That would still continue to be library-in-COA.
Yes.
We anticipate this a joint-use facility.
Because I was gonna...
As Carol said, the beauty of what the hours of the COA versus the hours of the library, again, the hours may be overlap, but when you have your heaviest demand, it's the opposite use, which makes the great synergy that's there. We did have...
Also, just let everybody keep in mind, these are just real preliminary type things. I mean...
But things to be considered, will there still be an ability to utilize meeting rooms, like after hours, like there'll be a separate...
Because most of the COA activities end at 3, 4 o'clock.
Right.
Well, it just looks like it all merges, so it's like...
So it does take...
It's a special event, though, right?
It does take that hallway and sort of extend it. So in my mind, at least, it would mean we'd still be able to operate the same way we do now, where it's on a separate alarm. That gets alarmed automatically at night after groups leave, like there's two groups over there right now.
Okay, so it'll be separated.
Tonight, you know, we're closed.
So the other little point to make, though, is if you guys, in the Council on Aging, were having a big, large event and the rest of the library was open, there's still two more library entrances.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
It's not as if this is the only...
Exactly, yeah. And if we do parking, as Michael suggested, more parking along Meadowbrook Way, then for people who park there, they're gonna gravitate normally towards those other two entrances, because they'll be closer.
Yep.
Now, since we're just spitballing, I want to throw this out there, and I can say this with immunity, because I am a senior. Yes, exactly. There had been some concern about seniors driving out through the exit when you have a playground with little kids right nearby.
I don't see why that would matter. What, I mean, the suggestion that seniors are more prone to, you know...
The data would indicate that seniors are worse drivers than the average driver, yes.
Well, let me just point out, there's a fair amount of distance between that exit and the driveway and the playground.
The driveway goes right next to the playground.
Well, if we make the area broader, as Michael's suggesting on Meadowbrook Way, then maybe they can exit that way.
Yeah, maybe they would be redefining...
I mean, there can be some optional exits.
We could, well, I'm, we're spitballing, so I'm just throwing it out there, because maybe that's...
We have duly noted your concern.
Maybe that's one of the solutions is to direct traffic out.
The playground is fenced in.
And the playground is fenced in.
How do you think you're a bad driver?
No, I'm saying that statistically, seniors are worse drivers than everyone else.
Okay, but Ron, the playground is fenced in.
It's fenced in.
Ron, the playground is fenced in as well. That was one of the reasons we did that.
I realize that, but the kids have to get from the car to the playground.
Well, they're usually accompanied by adults.
Normally, yes. With all due respect, I don't believe we need to get into this discussion.
Some of them are seniors, right?
I'm throwing it out there, because again, perhaps it's as simple as encouraging...
Mr. Milonowski will continue.
Moving right along.
Normally from Meadowbrook Way.
Probably establish different traffic patterns if that...
Yes.
So if we don't get into a select-person discussion...
Continue, please.
We'll take a look at that and identify, and before I flip this page, if you look at the gray area of the kitchen, that actually, in one version, was a corridor going out, and that gray area was between there, so we would have that connection. And that's where we said, you know what, the sacrifice that we're gonna have to do to walk across the hallway, and as Carol's mentioned, the steam trays, it's not just a steam tray, it's a steam cart.
Right.
It's like three or four trays wide, that you put the trays in, the carts on wheels, you wheel that right there, right on out, and we probably have two of those. So you could actually have a whole cafeteria line just for serving those. So you wouldn't be walking back and forth, you'd be making one trip over, one trip back.
Yeah, because for general lunches, one, you know, one big steam cart would be enough to feed everybody then.
I would hope, though. Something like this might incur, well, I mean, you know, hopefully, we're gonna get some growth in attendance.
If we build it, they will come, is that the...
Correct, yes.
Yeah, we do believe that this location would be more inviting...
He's setting up his play area.
...than the existing facility we have for people coming in. We also have some small office space that we will reconfigure on this first floor. On the second floor, directly above the cafeteria room or the dining room, we have designed this craft room. And this craft room would have, you know, more of a tile floor, where we can do painting and we can do more arts and crafts that are easier to clean up and aren't on a carpeted floor. So that identifies a large craft room, which can be utilized. And some of the rooms in the library are used as craft rooms, but they're carpeted. And this would be much better suited for that, plus we would also have an art sink in there, so people can wash off the brushes.
Where's the elevator from there?
So the elevator is, is right on the other side of the toilets on either floor.
Okay.
And that's perfect within the, you know, we don't have to build a new elevator, we can use the capacities there.
Yeah, use the same one.
We're not even proposing to build new bathrooms. We're gonna have to redo some plumbing, we're gonna have to redo some sprinkler systems. But, you know, some of the main utilities are already in the building.
That's great.
And we believe are properly sized to handle this addition.
And the stairs are right there for seniors that can handle the stairs.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And I, I'm sorry, I have to interject too, you know, there's a lot of seniors who bring their grandkids to that playground, too.
I mean...
Yes, we've been lucky so far, then.
Well, I just...
So we also have this 740-foot-square storage area that would probably be broken up into cages, so we could have like some dry products for the kitchen, you know, cups and plates, we could have the cage for library stuff, another cage for arts and crafts, whatever, a cage for quilting, you know, whatever the thing is, we could break that room up into storage.
And is the idea that when the, these spaces will have dedicated use, dedicate hours for the COA, but then they'd be available for the general public, say, at night, if there was nothing else going on?
Right.
Or in the day, at the same time.
Similar, similar to the way we use the meeting rooms at the library now, and, I mean, if you have been to the library at night, you know our meeting rooms, it's tough to get a meeting room at night. You know, we turn people away a lot, so there is, you know, some benefit that, you know, we'll have additional meeting space.
We also have meals down at the current COA. Would that be an alternative that would be available for organizations to use the kitchen?
Oh, like we do now? I would think so. I mean, that's something that would have to be hammered out as well.
Depends what we use the building for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be, you know, that would be pure speculation at this point, if you don't know.
Yeah, because we charge people for that, and I don't know, Michael and I have had some very preliminary discussions on whether we would want to continue that or how that would work, but...
In the right situation, where the town's protected and it's for a community-type event, and we would encourage things like that. What also wasn't mentioned is those rooms would also allow us to do yoga in the library and some other type of activities as well.
We have yoga at the library now, it's a Council on Aging-sponsored event, people come to the library. But with this, you know, there's a lot of overlap. When I first started, I mean, I'm a trained librarian, right, this is my thing. When I first started doing Council on Aging, my daughter, who I think was about 15 at the time, said to me, well, you know, what do you do at the Council on Aging? And I said, well, take everything I do with books at the library and replace it with food. That's sort of, but there's a lot of overlap in terms of what people who want to be involved in the community look for. So people who, we have a lot of seniors who use the library and the Council on Aging. And then we also have a lot of seniors who use the Council on Aging, but not the library or the library, but not the Council on Aging. By putting them together, we bring those people together, and it benefits both departments because it's an increase in visibility and use.
We've talked, we've talked for years about how the current building probably acts to keep some of the senior population away, because it really...
The COA, yeah.
At the COA.
Not an inviting building.
So, but we have a very, very large senior population. So I guess my, my follow-up question would be, is this facility, let's say we really get going, is this facility of a size that would be able to handle a resurgence of participation with the seniors in town? Because we've got...
Back to you, Michael.
We've got a number of senior villages, and, I mean, some of them have their own facilities. Right, agreed.
They do.
And that's the key point, is when you look at the town, and if you just took the whole town population and you looked at the people that are 55 and older, if that's what defines a senior, and I'm not saying that that's what it is, because I've gotten slapped for that before.
We define it at 62.
But the point being is that...
So do the feds.
The point is, is that that's not how Carver operates, is that we do have these large populations in certain villages that have their own community center, and those villages act as a community within a community. Yes, we do get some spillover of people leaving those, but for the most part, we don't.
But there's also a large population, excuse me, seniors who don't live in the villages.
Correct.
That's where I was going, is that there's still a large population of seniors that don't live in those villages, and this building would be properly sized to handle that with additional capacity, is what we're looking at at this point. You know, we're not proposing to build a community center like Ducksbury and anything like that. We're looking to try to do something that we can live with within our means and what makes sense for Carver.
I just, I would just want to make sure that we don't underestimate demand and be sitting around dealing with an undersized facility.
I think that's a valid point.
Yeah, and even in these plans, as we said, they're showing six seats around the table down at the existing facility.
We do eight now.
Around the table. All of a sudden, that quickly, you know, adds to your population, which is well over 100 already. So we have looked at that, I mean, you know, if every senior person in the town wants to come out, no, we don't have the facility, even the high school couldn't handle that. You know, so...
No, but they have to, there are probably some standards for recommended for a town our size of what size of facility we should have.
Right, but that's the caution point, is the standards don't apply to Carver because of the village component.
I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but...
We get larger numbers from the villages when we have special events, like when we do St. Patrick's Day, like when we did Thanksgiving, you know, a week ago, we were sold out at 70. So with this, you know, we could do 100. If Dawn doesn't kill me to make...
And then Dawn goes, I want a raise.
For making her cook more turkeys, but, you know, we could potentially serve more, so...
Just to kind of bottom...
As long as we get her a dishwasher, the worst, she'll cook more turkeys.
It'll be easier, there'll be bigger ovens.
Just kind of cutting to the chase, because we don't want to have the meeting go too long. What are you looking for us, from us tonight?
Oh, so just real quickly, the fourth page here just gives a master plan. This is just kind of a shape of the building, and if you look out to the side, it would be the fourth, you know, gable end that you would see, which fits into that. The last page is just a proposed kitchen layout. Now, these plans were really done, we had the architect from the elementary school kind of do us a favor for a short amount of money, put these things together with a, with a kitchen company. I guess the question is, is the committee wanted to kind of air this with the Board of Selectmen to see, A, are they going in the right direction? And if they're not, what should they be looking to change? If they're going in the right direction, then the next thing for us to do is, you know, take this conceptual component and actually go out and get a more robust design that we can actually assign some cost to. Once we assign some cost to, then we can move that forward to a future town meeting to actually have that funded into our capital outlay plan, if that's the direction the town wanted to go. But before we spend any more money on this, no one wanted to go any further without getting the Selectmen's endorsement, one way or the other.
Have, have we decided not to go with any of the other options? I mean, it seems like we're, like, definitely heading in one direction, and like, should the town be more involved with deciding whether we should just go in one direction or at least have a few alternatives for them to decide on?
I think there's two components to that. One is that, you know, as I started the presentation, the COA Board of Directors, in essence, is our liaison to represent the senior population, and that's who we should be getting input from. They're technically the experts that are sharing this information. They did have discussions with many people in the town, and, and we did kind of think about other alternatives, whatever they were. But, but keep in mind that once you go to look at a standalone facility, um, then all of a sudden, you're probably looking at doubling whatever the cost of this is going to be, because then you're getting a new generator, you're getting a new this, you're getting a new that, you're getting a new those. And what is the benefit of doing that if it's only going to be used four hours a day, whereas something like this gives you the synergies of creating the community center concept, which was in, in the master plan? So, after their discussions and talking to people, it kind of evolved into this solution.
I, I agree with everything you're saying, that for a quick, "Let's do something," that, that this would be the answer, and I, I'm, I was ju, I am just as for this as anybody else. However, in terms of our grand, um, uh, bigger picture, we still need the Police Department done. Could it ever be possible that, you know, merging different buildings, you know, in a, close together? And I'm just saying, we're kind of making the decision for the town by saying, "Well, we already thought about that idea, and that's going to be too expensive," but maybe the town may want to spend the money...
Sure.
...based on what we've come up with.
Two quick things. One is, this would have no impact on the police station. We still have funding set aside for that, so I don't want to say it's one or the other. We're still looking at both, the police station and the COA component, whatever that ends up being.
Right.
So I don't want anyone to think it's one or the other. We're still looking at both.
No, no, no. Yeah, I may not have been clear. Sorry, Sarah. I may not have been clear. What I'm saying is, um, like Plymouth, for example, how, um, when they built the Plymouth North High School, you know, it ended up working very nicely, that on the same lot of land, that they were able to create a senior center. So I'm just saying, without even, with no information whatsoever, who's to say that we couldn't have a big lot of land with the police station being redone as well as the Plymouth Center?
Have it attached to the police station instead of the library.
Exactly. You just don't know yet.
I don't think you want...
Hold on a second, please.
Emergency vehicles and seniors and the...
Yeah.
So, if I could, if I could...
Hold on a second, please.
I wasn't worried about the parking lot, the playground, but...
Please, please.
So if I could just add a point, I mean, I, I think that this plan is, I hear what you're saying, but I think this plan is doing what you're saying. And I think it's been vetted pretty thoroughly with the Master Plan Committee. We did have lots of members of the public in there, and Paul Babett was...
And a member of the COA Board of Directors as well.
Lots of members of the COA were there, and they, and they gave us some good input. So I don't think that, we're not saying this is, this is it. We're just asking them to move forward and get some costs for us. I think that was one of our goals, is to get costs for this and a cost for the police station. Um, one more quick point is that really not a lot of municipal land left. Although I know that when we built the playground, that land that it's built on is about 13 acres, and you wouldn't know it, but if you're facing the playground from Center Street, off to the left is room for a police station. And the reason I know that is because when we designed the playground, there was quite a bit of, um, discussion, shall we say, about where the police station was going to go. So we asked the engineers to please show us if we could fit a playground and a police station there, and they did. So, not that that's necessarily an ideal place for the police station, I'm simply pointing out, there's not a lot of land left that's municipally owned, and that's my point, and I'm sticking to it.
And also, just to piggyback on that, this is, the center of town is going to be the hub. You've got the fire station, town hall, library, COA. Police station is either going to where the existing one is, because that was one of the design plans to tear that down, rebuild, or over on the side of the playground, so it is all there. But, I agree, you can't, you can't put a COA with a police station.
I was just throwing it out there as an example in...
And I really don't think, you know...
I'm talking about that, have we thought of...
I, I think to Helen's point...
I don't need to beat this to death.
No, well, to Helen's, and Sarah brought up the, you know, has mentioned before, all the land over there. I think it would just behoove the committee to have a public hearing where you invite the public to come in. We've done, everything we've done over the last few years has been driven by transparency. And I, I'm, I'm not sure you can come up with a better plan. This may well be a great plan, but I think, you know, you, you, you cut criticism significantly when you are as open and listen and take as much input as you can, so that, while I'm certainly very comfortable with you moving forward and getting numbers for this, I would at the same time ask the committee to set a time to have a hearing or two, a public hearing or two, and invite the public to come in. I know there were some people that spoke to me and got me aside that were adamant that the library and the COA should never be connected. And, and, and we're never going to get, you know, anyone feeling unanimously about any, any decision that's made. However, those people should have an opportunity to explain why they think that's a bad idea. So I just think, you know, we, we really have done such a great job the last few years. The school eventually got, ultimately got passed because of the transparency. And I think you just have to take that same level of transparency, have a couple of public hearings, let the public come in, and then make your decision and recommendations at that point.
So let me suggest this, and I didn't, I neglected to mention this part, is that, you know, part of the next step, too, is, is we've got a subcommittee made up of just COA members that's put this together. The next step would be for you to authorize me to put together a building committee, similar to what we've done before. And if that's the authorization, we'll go ahead and put that, that balanced building committee together. We'll have a public hearing, present this plan...
Thank you.
Let the public discuss it. Based upon that discussion, then we'll go off and, and either continue this plan, or if the committee determines that they need to look at some other alternatives, they will. But again, you're absolutely right. We've had huge success, whether it's the fire station, whether it's the, um, the elementary school, and, you know, we're having some great success with the field plan and vetting that all out. But I guess my real push was, was before we start spending any money, we wanted to make sure, at least from the Board of Selectmen, who makes the recommendation to town meeting, that at least conceptually, this looks good to you. What you're saying is, "Hey, it does, but we just want you to, your committee, and expand the committee to have one public hearing with this, see what the input is, and then make a decision where you go from there."
Right.
Is that a fair statement?
Yep.
Perfect.
So can I get a motion?
Uh, I'll, I'll make, I guess, what do you want, a motion that...
So a motion to authorize the town administrator to create a building study committee similar to what's been done for the other schools, I mean, other buildings, and their first order of action is to hold a public hearing, and based upon that public hearing to, to go forth.
That's my motion.
Second.
And I seconded it.
I'm sorry, I seconded it.
She was before you.
It was my idea.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero. Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you for your efforts to date.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen, I'm sorry.
Yep.
You leaving us?
She's not feeling good.
Yeah, I'm leaning.
Oh.
Could you walk out, could walk out that way?
Feel better.
Bye.
All right.
Hope you feel better.
Moving on. Chapter 61A, AD Makepeace. And I apologize, this has taken so long, because we've been at 8:00, and I were now running 40 minutes late. Thank you, Mr. Selectman.
I suppose it's because I'm here?
Look at how much money you just made.
That's right.
But he knows me, so I say it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Rich Cirky, and I'm here in behalf of the AD Makepeace Company. I was attending the planning board hearing on this very subject tonight in the basement, because this pertains to a parcel of land on South Meadow Road, uh, at the Plymouth Carver Town Line, and I've, I've heard you discussing land in that very area. It's the site of a proposed 19-lot subdivision, which, um, the buyer of the land from the Makepeace Company, um, is presented to the planning board, and their hearing opened tonight, and it's been continued to next Tuesday. There's a site walk on Sunday. And my reason for coming here before you, as you know, is because I've given the required notices under Chapter 61A, and I'm here to ask if the town is willing to waive its right of first refusal, so that the buyer of this land can proceed to subdivide it pursuant to the application that's been filed.
Well, this is interesting.
Do I hear a motion, so we can discuss it?
I'll make, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to, for the purposes of discussion.
Player, second?
Second.
All right, for discussion.
The motion is to... To approve. Yeah.
I'm trying to look for...
To approve the request.
I think I, um, I killed it. I killed it, so go on to somebody else, and I'll look it for.
Mr. Clark.
Whoa.
It's getting late.
Well, I guess my question would be, normally we have a committee that reviews these, um, opportunities, and we get a recommendation from them? And, but the public doesn't do that, so...
This site has been reviewed by the town on several occasions, um, and every time, it's, it's, it's the same conclusion, that the, the town does not, does not see a need to keep the property, so the, the recommendation is not to exercise our right.
Okay.
It, it has had several alternative developments being proposed over the last five to 10 years, from a sports complex to, to other venues, and this is something that the planning department has been working with the developer, conceptually with, for, for a little while.
Yeah.
And also, I noticed that the, our acting planning director, Jack Hunter, recommended the town not purchase it. Also, our conservation agent, Brooke Rowe, recommended not to go ahead and purchase this. Any other questions?
No.
No, I mean, I, I know that, I think I've heard over the last 10 years, two or three times where there was a housing project going in there, and then nothing ever has come of it, so, um, I, you know, I have no problem following the recommendation of the, our representatives. So I'll make a motion, well, I made a motion, so...
Already did, we just need to vote.
Anything else? I don't have anything further on this one. So all those in favor of, of the motion as made, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, three, zero.
Thank you. Thank you. I was in traffic for two hours and 10 minutes.
I don't... Do you have a serious rating? Thank you very much.
And sorry for delaying you.
It's all right. It's amazing how fast I get these signed signatures. All right. Good night.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Rich Cirky.
All right, town administrator update. Let's see if we can pick up some time.
All right, I will move very, very fast. Um, what I'm passing out is our proposed, our preliminary Carver capital plan for FY19 through '28. This is a 10-year plan. It is a balanced plan based upon our projected revenues.
Are there any significant changes from what you've outlined to us in the past?
There are no significant changes in here. Um, in the, the next step would be to move this forward to the capital outlay committee. They will then go through a detailed review of each project. After their review, they'll come back to the board in February and make a recommendation that the board either adopt it as written or adopt it based upon their modifications. Again, the takeaway is here is it's a balanced plan, and the capital and debt stabilization funds that, that have been set up here do include funding for a COA addition, do include funding for a new, uh, police station, and do include some funds for a new sports complex at the middle high school. Plus, pay for the existing, um, roof boilers and door project at the middle high school. And those can all be done within this plan without any debt exclusion.
Just one quick note, the bottom line, that's all in red, that's not a shortage, that's just highlighting what our expenses are going to be, the final expenses are going to be anticipated by year.
Those are the fixed expenses based upon the seven line items above that.
Right.
Right.
And then those are subtracted from the available stabilization capital. So, in essence, for FY819, we have $2.9 million available in our capital plan. Of that, about $2.2 million is through fixed expenses, including these bond payments that I'm talking about, which then leaves about $700,000 in cash...
For everything else.
...to spend for everything else that year.
Hmm? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Appreciate it. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second? Motion made and seconded to approve the preliminary 10-year capital, uh, plan. Further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, three, zero to approve.
Quickly, in the update for the budget process, at our meeting on the 19th, we'll be moving forward with the proposed town budget for all the different departments. Continuing to update is on our capital building project. Elementary school is moving along well and under budget. Middle high school is in its final punch list of getting the doors and windows finalized. The sports complex at the middle high school, we did have a lengthy public discussion that was on cable last week as to some of the cost components for that. It, it is coming in at a bigger number than anyone anticipated, and the committee is looking at alternatives to still deliver a sports complex, but reducing down some of the components to a, to a number that's, that's more affordable. And, and come back with a public hearing sometime in the future to discuss that. Again, very similar to what we talked about here, is to, to have a public hearing, once we have a plan, that the committee's going to recommend going forward with.
Yeah, I did attend, I did attend that meeting, and a couple of the, some of the numbers that they, that have been put out there by the company designing this whole thing, they, they, there are going to be some reductions in those costs.
Is that what we're kind of planning, going to a turf field?
A turf field, and then looking at some of the buildings, how the stands are configured, um, all different alternatives. You know, and, and obviously, one of the big items is whether you go natural grass or artificial turf. Each has its pro and con, and, you know, what we're, what the next stage that we're doing, too, is really going forward and understanding what our town use is. What do the schools need? What are our town groups? And based upon that usage demand, will help to define what alternative to go forward with.
Great.
So that's where that stands. The police strategic plan is underway. Uh, the chief and I are working on that, and we're waiting to get some feedback from our consultants. And that concludes my update.
Outstanding. Agreed. Board of Selectmen update. Ms. Monroe, anything?
I don't have anything this evening.
Mr. Clark?
Uh, I just, I had sent an email to the town administrator, asking him, since I believe the deadline is Friday for articles for town meeting, that the senior tax relief article, go back on the warrant again for this year.
That's fine.
With any changes?
Um, there, there may be, there, none contemplated, but I'm going to find out from my representative what the latest is, and...
You going to be there for town meeting to support?
Yes, I will.
Oh, good. Thank you.
When it's a difficult vote.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I really don't have anything. I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Uh, we are getting into the holiday season, Christmas, Hanukkah. Um, as you're making plans with, for family coming in, and, and food, I hope you keep in mind those less fortunate. Shane gives thanks to Food Pantry. If you can contribute to that, that'd be a wonderful thing. There are other good charity, uh, organizations that are hurting this time of year. If you can think of, you know, can give a little bit for them, that would be really good. So other than that, I don't have anything. So we're going to start, move on to the Lakeville Animal Shelter contract, uh, Shelter Contract Renewal.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the standard annual lease that we do with Lakeville.
Make a recommendation that we approve the contract renewal?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, three, zero. All right, also, appointment of new members to the Kibber Marion Wareham Regional Repuse Disposal District Committee. Mr. Milonowski?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, we have, Mr. Robinson is one of the, uh, he fills one of the three seats on that. Uh, we have two vacancies. Uh, the, uh, two members resigned, one in August and one in September. Uh, so at our next meeting, um, we plan, we'd like to, you know, make some recommendations So at our next meeting, we'd like to, you know, make some recommendations on getting two people to go over that. As I've announced in previous meetings, there seems to be some inequities as to how the town of Carver is being charged compared to its fellow towns. And that is being looked at in great detail by Mr. Robinson. And we'd like to get a few more people on that committee just to assist him in that effort.
Just so people don't think we've been sitting on these vacancies, even though they occurred in August and September, it was only fairly recently, I believe, that we were made aware of the vacancies.
That's correct.
So it's not something we've been sitting on. So if you have an interest in serving on this committee, and really, it's something, you know, if you're willing to really get into some finances and whatnot, and protect the town, this is a good committee to go ahead and be part of. Because like Mr. Milonowski says, we have some questions about how things are going with that, and without having a whole group of three committee members, it's going to be harder to try to get some information, so. All right, moving on. Minutes, licenses, topics, yada, yah. So minutes from 11/7/17.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
My understanding is that despite being absent, I am still legally allowed to second the motion.
Because of an emergency, so would you second it?
Well, he read all the minutes, so he's testifying if you update at all.
That is correct.
All right, further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor approving the minutes from November 7, 2017, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, three, zero. All right, we have a, let me scroll back up to it.
The New Year's Eve.
Request for a one-day license extension for the Tiki Kai on New Year's Eve, 12:31, midnight to 2:00 a.m.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Subject to approval by the police, police chief? Well, the recommendation of the police chief, that he's okay with it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of granting this license extension, pending the concurrence by the chief of police, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Next meeting, actually, we're going to go, with the concurrence of the board, 12/19, not 12/5.
So no 12/5.
No, 12/5. Do --
Is there a reason why, like, we don't have a lot?
Well, it's not really enough to do, and that'd be, it's one week, but I don't want to go to the end of December.
No, that's fine.
Or after the holidays, so.
No, I was just curious.
They'll give us a couple extra weeks.
I just will miss you, and the next time you see me, don't say, "Nice to see you."
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that to you, I'd say it to him. And as part of going for the 19th is the fact that --
Because I think that's what you said when we first were in.
Mr. Clark isn't able to meet on the 5th of January.
No, I'm hearing, I could make the 5th, I couldn't make the 12th.
Oh, the 12th.
I was given the options of the 12th and the 19th, and I said I could make the 19th.
Okay, so.
I could be here next week if you want to meet.
Not really.
All right, well, let's put it where it is.
You know, not too much of a, we don't want too much of a good thing here, Ron.
Mr. Chairman, I have no executive session recommendations.
Ouch.
Don't you know what you're in?
Oh, my gosh, no, oh, that's wonderful.
You're supposed to second.
I'm second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no.
Aye, aye, aye.
Meeting closed. Thank you very much.